Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, January 26, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Public participation in this meeting, members of the public can attend in person or watch or listen to the meeting live via watching it live on Channel 4 or going to LHCaz.gov/tv. We are also receiving public comment that can be read into the record by emailing prior to the meeting to thecityclerk@LHCaz.gov. We will now have the invocation from Pastor Andrew Cave from Lamb of God Lutheran Church. Welcome Pastor.
The Apostle Peter writes in his first letter, "Be subject for the Lord's sake to every human institution, whether it be to the emperor as supreme or to governors, as sent by him to punish those who do evil and to praise those who do good. For this is the will of God, that by doing good you should put to silence the ignorance of foolish people. Live as people who are free, not using your freedom as a cover-up for evil, but living as servants of God. Honor everyone, love the brotherhood, fear God, honor the emperor." Let us pray. Almighty Father, you have appointed our civic leaders to curb those who are evil and to praise those who do good. Grant to these your servants the wisdom, knowledge, and discernment to govern according to your will, and grant that all people may know your will rightly, so that we may live lives of peace and freedom in you. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. And we'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance led by ASU Changemakers, TJ Cook.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome TJ. If you want to share a little bit about ASU Changemakers with the organization or with the group?
So, good evening Mayor and members of council. My name is TJ Cook and I would first like to thank you all for allowing me to participate in tonight's council meeting. I'm a senior at ASU Lake Havasu and tonight I am representing Changemakers. Changemakers is a student-led club where members are passionate about helping others and giving back to their community. We wish to provide students on campus with opportunities, resources, and leadership skills to inspire and sustain social change. Ideally, we as Changemakers strive to provide students with volunteer opportunities that relate to their career goals, so that once they are in those careers, they can carry social entrepreneurship into their fields. Although Changemakers was established in 2011 at the main campus, we are brand-new to ASU Lake Havasu. We began working at the campus just before COVID-19 had shut down most of the country. We had a very successful food drive, we were compiling a database, and we had big plans for 2020, but then COVID happened. We had sent many of our students back home, they had switched us to online learning, and clubs were unable to operate, classes were unable to meet, and so our big plans had to be set aside. However, now that we understand the virus a little more and the path to vaccination is a lot more clear, ASU is allowing us to pick up where we left off. We understand that we live in unprecedented times and we need to accomplish unprecedented goals. So Mayor, members of council, and members of community, we are asking and seeking opportunities to help those who need it most. Thank you.
Thank you TJ. All right, item four on the agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell?
Here.
Jim Dolan?
Here.
David Lane?
Here.
Michelle Lynn?
Here.
Cameron Moses?
Vice Mayor Jenny Koch?
Here.
Mayor Kalshihi?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five on the agenda is the Call to the Public. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council with any matter within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. You'll have three minutes to address the council. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have three minutes, yellow means one minute remaining, and red means that the three minutes is up. You don't have to sign up to speak at Call to the Public, but we did have some folks that did, so we'll start with those and then you can make your way to the podium. So we'll start with Christine Simmons. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, I gotta lower this a little bit. Okay. I just want to introduce my favorite magazine now, and everyone needs to go pick up a Living Magazine, because there's a beautiful article about POD in our cleanup day, and you'll see the gorgeous horses that live across the street from me and that they want to ride their horses in the desert. We've had a huge campaign, POD stands for Protect Our Desert, and we're having another cleanup on the last weekend in March. So now you all have your new calendar, so mark that Saturday or Sunday for just an hour and come and join us and pick up some of the trash that has been dumped in our desert. We're really focusing on our recreational shooters. They leave to leave no trace behind. We find targets on cactus, we find bottles and TV sets shot up, so there's all kinds of debris left by them. So we want a safe corridor for them to have their recreation, but to also respect the other people that use the desert. We have hikers, riders, and people that just love the desert. Our big goal is to educate the children, because then they'll say, Daddy, you can't leave that mess, you gotta pick it up. So it's real easy for a shooter, just put a tarp down and pick up your debris. So we're just asking everyone to be respectful. Our desert is all around our city, and if the children know to respect it, then I think they'll teach the parents and family members too as well. So here is a beautiful picture of our horses, and there's a huge container that we literally filled, and the BLM was so happy with us that they paid our dump fees. So, so please pick up your Living Magazine, it's right now in your markets for free, and some wonderful other things in here too, about rocks and things I didn't know. So put your calendar out, March 27th and 28th, we'll be there from 8:30 to 3:30, and we'll have a big dumpster to fill up. Okay, so help us out? All right, thanks so much. And that ASU organization, that would be great for them too.
He's shaking his head, so. Yeah Christine, if citizens that are watching this want to participate, how do they participate? Just show up?
Oh, yeah. We're, we're, thank you Mayor. Where you show up is at Paso de Oro, and there's an entrance to the desert there. It's on Colt Drive in Paso de Oro. You'll see the big dumpster, we'll be there with handout with trash bags, gloves if you need them, water bottles too. We encourage you to come and participate and bring your children. It's outdoors, so it's kind of safe, we can, you know, separate out there, but there's lots of areas that need to be picked up. So thank you again.
Yeah, thank you. All right, the next speaker is Sarah Jones. Good evening, welcome.
Hi guys, how are you tonight? Thank you. I just wanted to come tonight and speak on the new taxes, you guys considering doing something like that? I would like to, from what I read, something to the effect that we need more revenue or whatnot. I don't know that we have ran into this big of a problem or whatnot for a while. I know that COVID has had a lot of closures down of our current events, so I would suggest opening up the events and whatnot instead of closing those down. The vaccine is available now for those who are worried, whatnot, everybody knows by now if you're sick, stay home, but I think if we just open up and stop canceling events, that sort of thing. We got closed down in the spring, as you guys all know, we already are hurt and still trying to recover from that, and raising our taxes is gonna bury us. So I'd encourage you guys to find definitely a different way to do something, the revenue or whatnot, but don't take it on our citizens. And as you guys know, we want less government, so I read too that you wanted to hire possibly 15 to 18 more new employees, city employees or whatnot, but haven't had the funds. We really need less government and just everybody kind of do their job. So that, and then I also wanted to congratulate our entire county, that our county did pass our resolution, it was Resolution 2021-17, so our county is now a constitutional sanctuary county, along with a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. So we would love to encourage you guys to join us, just strengthen us, strengthen within our community. It's just a matter of us just banding together. Okay, so don't raise our taxes and open up those events. Don't cancel the events, winter event has been canceled, whatnot, we had the balloon fest, that's great revenue, we have a lot of people who come in from all over the place to do this, that brings in quite a bit of money. I don't know, just figure it out, but don't raise our taxes, okay? Thanks.
Thank you. And it's important to note that the events have been canceled by event promoters, so those are not actions of the city, so.
I understand that, but maybe some encouragement from our city and our council members and city management, maybe can, you know, let people know vaccines are available, whatnot, there are other things to take care of, and if that is why they're canceling it, then they, we're all suffering, and if this is gonna be our, you know, it'd just be nice to have some encouragement from you guys.
Yeah, I understand.
To let them know, you know, don't take it out on us.
Yeah, thank you. All right, the next speaker is Joseph DeMulling. Hi, good evening, welcome.
Good evening Mayor and Honorable Council.
If you could just lift the microphone up just a little bit, so those at home, thank you. Yes.
My name is Joseph DeMulling. My wife and I have now owned our home at 2868 Saratoga Avenue in Havasu for six years. We love the town, people, and especially the patriotism, small-town feel and generally friendly folks. This past Saturday evening, there was a serious and dangerous situation which occurred in our neighborhood at approximately 9:30. My wife and I were startled by seven very loud and large explosions, and several people screaming in fright. We came to find out that they were the result of stadium quality or mortar fireworks being set off in the driveway of the house at 2892 Saratoga, which is three houses from us. Several neighbors in the area were reacting in great fear, saying they thought we were under attack. The police department immediately responded and issued them a ticket. We spoke to the Officer Hovdell, who came and talked to the neighborhood residents, calming our outrage, our fears, and our frustration. We really appreciated him taking the time to hear us out. He too was very frustrated by the ongoing complaints of incidents at this house. This is a large five-bedroom home that is utilized as a VRB owned, owned by an out-of-state resident from California. Each and every weekend, there's generally large groups of young folks that come in from California and party hard the whole weekend, which until now, the neighborhood has had to put up with, mainly because of the renters' complete disregard for us and the police. Their behavior continues even if the officers were sent out with warnings. There's been so many situations of inappropriate and aggressive behavior. In one instance, a group of male partiers were on the roof of the house screaming and yelling at 2:00 AM in the morning. Other incidents, partiers climbed the outside walls going onto the neighborhood's properties. Another, several male occupants were walking down our street, shooting large fireworks at our homes in the neighborhood at 3:00 AM. Many of the residents are scared from these encounters and don't want to confront these weekend renters. We are very concerned for the safety of not only our homes, but for our animals that are so easily traumatized, the children that are woken up crying in the middle of the night, and the seniors that are terrified to come out of their homes because of so much noise, yelling, screaming, and now more escalated explosions over this weekend.
Yeah, you go ahead and finish your comments.
My wife and I believe that our police officers are valuable and need support from the community, so I am taking action with a neighborhood petition, which is getting many more signatures than I expected. This petition states our frustration and request to indefinitely cancel the permit of the owners of this VRBO to you, the city council, and the appropriate channels, including the police department and the mayor. Would appreciate your support, the communication, or any ideas you would contribute as well. We appreciate your service to our community and town. Thank you for your time and assistance, please, Joseph DeMulling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. So we share your same frustration, and it's, we're preempted by state law, but we're working on a bill in the legislature right now, so we're on it. Yes. All right, that concludes the folks that have signed up. If anyone else would like to address the city council during the Call to the Public, just make your way to the podium and then state your name for the record. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Shehe and fellow council members. My name's Jeffrey Cowan, I've lived in Havasu, I'm going on my third month. I wished I'd moved here a lot sooner, it's paradise, I came from the Palm Springs area. I'm originally from Los Angeles. We have the worst police force in the nation, and you guys probably have the best. I've met several of your officers, they've stopped by to say hello, and I'm a little concerned that the city has, is not able to afford masks for them, because they've come over a couple of times and they're never, they're not wearing masks, and I don't want them to get sick. I don't have the COVID, but there probably are a lot of other people that might be sick. One of the officers was by on, I think it was last Thursday, Michael Malloy, and I wanted to give him a couple of masks, which I purchased today, and I also want to make a hundred-dollar donation to the Lake Havasu Police Force, so that they can have, have money to get masks for their officers. I know they don't make a lot of money, and I don't, I'm retired, I have had a wonderful life, I was an educator in the California Community College Systems, I'm a CPA, I'm still CPA. I won't stop working. You know, I'm a workaholic, what could I say? I said workaholic, not alcoholic, but there's a lot of those in town too, I've been to your bars. I like karaoke, and, but I don't drink when I go to the bars. You know, I don't like to drink and drive, because I could spill some, you know, that would be terrible. But anyway, thank you, and please, I will give these to one of the officers for Officer Malloy, and I will send the check, or I'll drop it by to the police department sometime this week. Thank you. It's a wonderful city, I love it.
Thank you. Hi, good evening, welcome. Just state your name for the record. Oh, no, yeah, we have you Jeffrey, yes, thank you.
Good evening Mayor and Council, I am Reverend Krista Sokes Demeling. My husband just spoke on the regards to the vacation rental, and I just wanted to see if I could add some points, this is a bad apple, but it's escalating and getting very dangerous. So tonight, I'm asking the revoke of the permit of any kind in this particular address. The impact of this is going through many of our streets, we have neighbors from all over, and one of the things, this is not teenage antics with this home, this is a repeat for 20 to 50-year-olds, very, very brazen people. Every week, we clean out trash in our yards, I can't tell you how much trash we have, beer bottles, drug paraphernalia, I don't do drugs, so I don't know what half these device things are. The blocked driveways where they park their boats right in front of our home, we tried, we had to go somewhere and we couldn't, because they parked their boat, block our driveways, we can't find the owners, they're just long gone. The drag racing, which recently endangered one of the children in our yard, there was a child playing outside and we had a very close call. The dogs now that won't go outside, a lot of the animals, the veterinarians, we have to get medication for our dogs, because the fireworks constantly going off. The babies and children, we have two, an infant and a one-year-old with single moms trying to work. As a working professional myself, every weekend, we're disrupted, and this is 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 AM in the morning. We've had to take evasive actions on our property from the vandalism, we've all been forced to get security cameras, now multiple cameras, to protect ourselves, we've had to get security systems on top of that, it's just, it's getting more and more. So, you know, we had spoken with the police officer that responded again, and, you know, to support him, we asked, how can we support you? And it's a drain on the whole community, especially the police, because this is, they'll come out several times, and these people have no reports. So we called the owner, and we're met with just a who cares attitude. There's no offer of an apology, there's no, let me call these people and put a warning. As soon as we do, the partiers start going up, then they'll start walking the streets. This is many different people, this is happening every weekend. So we're asking for an expedite of this, if any suggestions, anything, because our neighborhood, we're trying to maintain its integrity. We have two elderly women, little widows, that will not come out of their homes, they're terrified, because there's been instances where we as neighbors step out and say, hey, can you just cool it? You know, we're not against having fun, but when there's vandalism and these, you know, things start showing up, they'll scream at these women, they're the sweetest thing. So we're just asking, I'm very grateful you all can listen to me and hear me, so we're just asking for some help and support, and if we can support you in any way, we're willing to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, good evening, welcome.
My name is Alain Dubray, I'm here to talk about the same home these two last, two people were talking about, I happen to live behind it, and I've been dealing with this for three years. It's getting old, it's irritating, and a lot of the neighbors are concerned about calling the police or doing something because of repercussion. I happen to not be one of those people, I have gone over there myself in the middle of the night, opened the door, and asked them, what in the hell do you think you're doing? So that's where I stand, but I don't want to have to go over there and do that. I'm sure the officer the other evening said he's tired of coming to this particular home. It is a three-bedroom, but it's a three-car garage, so they made the garages into extra bedrooms, and it is a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during the Call to the Public? Seeing that, we'll close the in-person Call to the Public, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Williams. We did receive some written comments via email at cityclerk@LHCaz.gov. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, two comments were received. The first comment on Monday, January 20, I'm sorry, yesterday, Monday, January 25th, "Good evening Mayor and Councilmembers. Starting out, I want to say that I'm not a resident of Lake Havasu, but have rented a place here since January 1st. We have never been to your fine city before this year. My wife and I both had the opportunity to work remotely, and we chose Lake Havasu to enjoy warm weather and work remotely. We love your town, everyone is friendly. It has a great location, and we were, possibly still are, not sure at this point, thinking about moving to Lake Havasu permanently. However, there is one big problem, our internet service. We were told by the owners that the internet is good in Lake Havasu. It is not. The house we are staying at has Suddenlink. I thought Frontier was bad. Wow, this company is awful, and it really does affect where we want to move to. We both work, our house has to have at least adequate to good internet. Drive by the Suddenlink building sometime, there are always customers waiting outside. The customer service people inside are terrific. They are doing the best they can, it is not their fault. The problem is the company themselves. They laid off most of their service personnel and are now outsourcing. A guy came to my house, fixed some things, but the real problem is in the node on the pole in the backyard. Apparently, they have to be readjusted for cold weather, and then adjusted again for hot weather in the spring and summer. If they know this, why can't they just do it? Why do they have to wait until customers call because their internet isn't working, because the node is not adjusted for cold weather? Because when we call, we first get their answering machine or someone in another country. After that fails to solve anything, then we have to drive down to their building and wait outside for an hour until one of their overworked and underappreciated office staff calls a tech, then the tech says, there is an outage in your area. Really? Well, that explains why I showed up at their building and waited an hour, thanks for that. I have heard too many times in the three weeks I've been in Lake Havasu, there is an outage in your neighborhood, and we will get to you as soon as possible. Yes, I know there is an outage. I also know why, because whatever node is on top of the pole needs to be adjusted, and apparently Suddenlink laid off most of the people who know how to adjust it, and the three techies left are too busy, and are the outsourced techs can't do it. The outsourced guy who came two weeks ago said he would put in a ticket to have the node fixed. Regarding when it would be fixed, he said, it could be a day, it could be two weeks. When I went into Suddenlink's store today, they told me it had yet to be scheduled. It is apparent Suddenlink cannot serve the needs of Lake Havasu. Although this is the only drawback to Lake Havasu City, I can see right now it is a huge one, and will affect our decision on whether to come back to stay temporarily or permanently. I am spending the time to write this email, because in talking with residents, who are also very upset, they said this is an issue known by the city, and they are looking into it. Please do more than look into it, and use your powers to find an internet provider who can provide internet. Suddenlink cannot, not because they don't have good staff, but because they have extremely poor management. Submitted by Bob Barrett. The second comment was received on Tuesday, January 26th, with a comment of city council meeting. Mayor Shehe and council members, so after voting yourselves a hefty pay raise, you are now discussing raising taxes on Lake Havasu City residents. How tone deaf is that? A property tax increase would not only impact property owners, but would also affect our already high rents. A sales tax increase would affect everyone at a time when many people are already struggling to provide for their families. Raising taxes in the midst of a pandemic-driven economy, economic downturn simply because you lack the will to balance your own budget, is unconscionable and irresponsible. In the past, in the past four years, I have seen the rent on my house increase by over 25% as property values have soared due to a flood of Californians fleeing a state that has been economically ravaged by the same tax and spend policies you are proposing. It drives up the cost of living, and as a retiree living on a fixed income, Havasu is quickly becoming unaffordable. If you're spending more money than you're taking in, then you need to do what every citizen and business does under similar circumstances, adjust your budget. I can't just turn on some magic money spigot if my financial resources are running low at the end of the month. Why should elected officials get a pass? Raising taxes is a go-to solution for politicians unwilling to control their spending. You should not be excused for your ineptitude by balancing your budget on the backs of taxpayers. Don't California my Arizona. Submitted by Ron Danielson.
Thank you. And that concludes our written Call to the Public as well, so I'll go ahead and close the Call to the Public. Moving on to item six, the Consent Agenda, would any of the council members like to remove any of the items on the Consent Agenda for separate discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Koch, yes.
I moved that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Koch and a second from Councilmember Lane, is there any further discussion? Seeing that, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item seven, which is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 7.1 is to announce the vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one alternate pilot member, and the Board of Adjustment, four regular members, and three alternate members. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at www.lhcaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 7.2, which is our City Managers Report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening Mayor and Council. I'd like to start the manager's report with some news coming from our fire department. Our Lake Havasu City Fire Rescue and EMS was selected among 250 fire departments nationwide to participate in the second phase of National Fire Protection Association's Community Risk Reduction Pilot Program, to build a digital community risk assessment tool. The tool or dashboard will enable our fire department to gain valuable insights, make data-informed decisions, and pinpoint where risks exist in the community, and to better equip our fire prevention efforts. As a participant in the pilot program, the fire department will have free access to this dashboard, which includes customized visualizations such as maps, charts, graphs, that illustrate each community's risk and hazard across a variety of different categories, taking into account demographics, geography, building stock, economics, infrastructure, and event loss history. It's very exciting to be chosen for this pilot program. Congratulations to you Chief Plafis and your team for being selected and having the, taking the steps to make this happen. We look forward to having the data- We look forward to having the data at our fingertips so we can be better prepared to know where to focus our efforts and our resources in Lake Havasu City. We've talked in the past about our ARF truck. There's a picture there. To help maintain the level of service needed for the safety for the, at the airport and for potential aircraft incidents, three of our fire captains, which is Captain Green, Captain Schulberg, and Captain Sylvester, recently took a 40-hour interactive basic certification course to safely and proficiently work on the aircraft rescue and firefighting truck, otherwise known as the ARF truck at the airport. So this allows us to do the maintenance necessary and be certified with not just the use, but the maintenance of the vehicle. The first coffee with the mayor-manager of 2021 will be held on Friday, February 5th, and it'll be doing it at the community center, Relics and Rod's Hall. Residents are encouraged to attend this socially-distanced event to express any issues, concerns, or questions, and engage in some back-and-forth dialogue. The event does not require RSVP, and it's an informal come-and-go setting, but we will be capping the attendance of the event. The meeting will be streamed on Facebook Live for all those that would like to see it from their homes, and it'll be on the city's Facebook page at lhcazgov. And finally, based on the information provided by the Mojave County Public Health Department, as of January 25th, there have been 768 new cases from my last report. You can see the breakdown by month in the graphics shown on the screen. Currently, there are 768 individuals in self-quarantine at Lake Havasu City, or otherwise known as active cases, and then 3,915 have completed quarantine since the beginning of the pandemic. With that, Mayor and Council, that concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions if needed.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. Do any members of the council have any questions? All right, we'll move on to item eight, which is our public hearings. Item 8.1 is approved cooperative purchase of a Lenko Bearcat armored vehicle using Houston-Galveston Area Council Contract Number AM 10-20. Captain Sterling?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Troy Sterling, the Support Division Captain here at the Police Department, and I'm here on behalf of Chief Doyle this evening. He sends his apologies, but of course he said hello to most of you before he left, so. Tonight on your agenda is the approval of a cooperative purchase of a Lenko brand Bearcat. It's an armored vehicle, and we're utilizing a Houston-Galveston Area Council contract. This item was briefly discussed in November 10th meeting, and so I just have a couple items just to kind of highlight from that meeting, and then we can take any questions from there. This was an item that we've discussed for many years of looking to acquire, but of course it never just was a priority on our budget list. There's been several incidents over the past several years that we could have used an armored vehicle. Currently, our surrounding agencies, Bullhead, Kingman, and the Sheriff's Office do have one, so if we do have the need for one, it's at least an hour, an hour and a half away. Our last incident, we happen to have here in Lake Havasu, was a shooting over on Pontchartrain where several rounds were fired off from an AR-15 rifle, and very fortunate that no police officers or civilians were hit during that incident, but it was just a perfect example of where an armored vehicle would have come in handy for our SWAT team. Things that we could utilize this armored vehicle for, of course, enhanced protection of our SWAT members for evacuation situations of neighbors in a residential area. Allows our SWAT team to be able to move in, potentially in a barricade situation where they can get closer to the residents to be able to deploy different tactics. Probably the Bearcat that we're looking at is the most common one utilized in law enforcement today, and unfortunately, it's about a nine-to-10-month build time. So the funding that we'll be utilizing for this will be carried over in the next budget year if approved. One of the things we did consider was, of course, the repair and maintenance cost of maybe acquiring a vehicle from military surplus, and of course, anything that we've dug into in that arena, the costs are very, very high. The good thing about the Bearcat is that it has an actual Ford diesel engine in it, and our shop actually has worked on the same type of engines with other vehicles in our fleet, so that's kind of a nice feature. The funding itself, as far as fiscal impact, we're looking at, it's coming out of the general fund, but it's due to the CARES Act savings that we acquired, and at this time, we're looking for approval of that item. We're happy to answer any questions if you have any for you.
Thank you, Captain Sterling. Do any members of the council have any questions for Captain Sterling? Councilmember Campbell?
I have a question. First off, how many years do you expect this to go? And I know that the sheriff has quite a few, and they sit for a long time. So are you expecting this to be something that we can acquire for probably decades because of the hour time that the use, that we hope we never use it? Let's just hope that it just sits in a garage, right, everyone? That's what we hope for.
You hit the nail on the head. I mean, that's obviously the goal, is we don't have to use this, but having that feature available. Yeah, we looked at being able to, as opposed to sitting out in the sun for a long period of time and sitting there. We're looking at ways right now, and we have fortunately some time on our hands to build a, put it into an area in our lot that we can protect it as best as possible, so we are looking at ways to be able to preserve it as long as possible.
Yeah, there's definitely ways that we've done that with our trucks as well. We just get those covers to cover them, because as we know, sun damage can destroy more maintenance than most, so thank you for your presentation.
Any additional questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Yeah, if you just want to make your way to the podium, state your name for the record. Good evening.
Hi, my name's Janet Grippy. I just want to go over, on November 10th, you guys said that that money for the armored car was going to come out of the CARES Act money. That was on that whole PowerPoint, so I just want to verify, because it was $292,000 and some odd dollars. I just want to confirm, is that indeed coming out of the CARES Act money?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, that's all I want to do is verify it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the in-person call to the public. We did not receive any written comments on this item, so we'll go ahead and close the call to the public and bring it back to council. Mayor? Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to approve the cooperative purchase of a Lenko Bearcat armored vehicle in the amount of $277,016, utilizing the Houston-Galveston Area Council Contract Number AM 10-20, and payment of the applicable delivery fees and taxes, and authorize the city manager to sign the cooperative purchase agreement on behalf of the city.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, item 8.2 is approved sole-source purchase of two LifePak 15 units from Stryker Medical. Chief Poloffis will be joining us on...
Mayor and Council, I'm on Zoom.
All right, give us just a second to switch over for it.
Mayor and Councilmember, can you hear me?
Now we can, yes. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, council members. This is approval for two cardiac monitors, LifePak 15s, for a sole source with Stryker Medical. We are replacing two LifePak 12s that have reached their service life. This equipment is used for ALS treatments, which is advanced life support for our paramedics, for diagnostics, for cardiac arrhythmias, and for cardiac arrests. This is an essential tool for our firefighter paramedics to use on 70% of the calls that we respond to in regards to emergency medical services. And we're just replacing the allocated equipment that we have with newer equipment. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Yeah, thank you, chief. Do any members of the council have any questions for the chief? It doesn't look like we have any questions, chief, so we'll go ahead and open up the call to the public. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the call to the public. We also did not receive any written comments on this item as well, so we'll bring it back to council for discussion or a possible motion.
Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to approve the sole-source purchase of two LifePak 15 units and associated equipment from Stryker Medical in the amount not to exceed $60,000.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Vice Mayor Koch. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.3 is approve amendment number one to the Engineering Professional Services Agreement for the S-1C-24 water storage replacement and expansion with Atkins. Mr. Frosley, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. This amendment we're discussing this evening is to a design contract for the design of a replacement water tank located at Booster Station 1C on Scout Drive. The existing water tank that was demolished was a 1 million gallon water tank. The, our master plan proposed or suggested that we replace it with a 1.5 million gallon water tank to enhance our fire flows in the area. That's not to say, of course, that we weren't already adequately providing fire flow with a 1 million gallon tank, because we were since, or happened since the 1960s when that tank was originally built. Once we started our design, excuse me, and got to about 30%, we realized that the site constraints, the site was kind of small for the larger tank. And to accommodate that larger tank, we would have had to remove some power poles. We would have had to put a very large and expensive retaining wall in, and it didn't pencil out in the end. Even if we got the tank in there, it would be very difficult to get our service trucks to the Booster Station and to the tank for servicing and maintenance. So we decided to change course, and we asked Atkins for a proposal to replace the water tank at Booster Station 1C at 1 million gallons in kind, put it back where it was, and that's what this is for. It's, the amendment is less than $8,000, however, it's more than 5% of the original contract, which is why we're here before you tonight for the small dollar amount. And I'm happy to answer any questions, may I have?
Thank you, Mr. Frosley. Do any members of the council have any questions? Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. Greg, I'm assuming since we're going from a 1.5 down to a 1, there's going to be a significant savings in the construction contract when that comes around for the tank?
Correct. It's a smaller tank, so we should be well within our budget.
Are there any additional questions? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the in-person public hearing, and we did not receive any comments on this item as well, so we'll bring it back to council for further discussion or a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Lane?
I move to approve amendment number one to the Engineering Professional Services Agreement for the S-1C-24 water storage tank replacement and expansion with Atkins.
All second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, thank you. All right, moving on to item 8.4 is approve cooperative purchase of two micro-transit vehicles from Santan Ford utilizing Arizona State Contract ADSPO 17-166124. Mr. Cypress, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm here tonight to present your agreement to see if you'll approve for two micro-transit vehicles that we're going to buy from the state contract from Santan Ford. These vehicles will be coming out of the transit budget fund. They'll also be the first of our demand response micro-transit fleet. Takes about 14 to 16 weeks to get these vehicles ordered and shipped, so I'm here tonight to present this to you. This is part of our Phase 2 plans. We want to make sure that we get these actually on order, and they're here in time for our fall launch of the micro-transit piece. I'm here to answer any questions for anybody?
I have a question.
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
When I first got my agenda, looking it over, a question came up, and then again this morning, a citizen I was talking to had kind of a similar question, so would, it's been explained to me, but I think it's important that we explain to the public, is there a reason why we're not buying those locally?
It's, we have the, we have an agreement, a state agreement, that they meet the regulations of the FTA and the state, so the reason why we don't buy them, because the dealers maybe are not the ones on the bid for the Arizona State Contract.
Okay.
So every couple of years, those dealers go out to bid, and same thing when we're buying our buses out of Phoenix and not any other local places, because they too are on state contract. And when we buy through the federal government, you have to meet all the requirements of meeting these for whether the dealership's a commercial or a regular auto dealership.
Thank you, Patrick.
Okay.
Are there any additional questions of council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the in-person call to the public, and we also did not receive any items on this item either, so bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, I move to approve the cooperative purchase of two micro-transit vehicles, Ford-edged from Santan Ford utilizing the Arizona State Contract ADSPO 17-166124 in the amount of $68,554.18.
I second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses and a second from Councilmember Campbell. All right, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Excellent, thank you. All right, we'll move on to item nine, which is our current events. Do any city council members have any council committee reports?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
Yes, we had a Parks and Rec meeting last night, and Mr. Keen gave a great review of the retreat to the board. I just wanted to give a little shout-out to our pickleball association. They wanted to inform the Parks and Rec Board that they still have money set aside for any amenities for the Dixmont Park, and they want the council to know that they still want to be seen as contributing partners in the future projects in that area. And like I said, they have, they've already like started collecting money again. The ambassador would like the council to know that lights would be a great and feasible project to consider. So I just wanted to put it out there that they're still out there and they're still wanting help with getting the projects done in the pickleball.
Excellent, thank you. Wait, did you say the pickleball courts were looking for lights? That would be a nice addition?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Yeah, broke up for a second. I wasn't sure if I caught that. Excellent, thank you for the report. Are there any other council committee reports? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item 10, which is our future meetings. On Tuesday, February 9th, 2021, at 6:00 PM, we'll have a regular meeting. And then on Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021, at 6:00 PM, we'll also have a regular meeting. Item 11, are there any future discussion items from any of the members of the council? All right, seeing none, I'll move to 12 and entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn from Vice Mayor Koch and a second from Councilmember Lane. We are adjourned. Be kind, everyone. Thank you for joining us.